Good evening, everybody. Let's call order the City Commissioners Meeting, headed Wednesday, December the 4th. We will rise by your case and head by Mr. Pamela Bailey, followed by our committee committee. Please rise.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Commissioners, good evening, everybody. Let us bow our heads. I pray to you, God, for this son, Jesus Christ. Lord, as we come to the close of 2019, I thank you, Father, for leading and guiding us. I give you praise for all the blessings we receive and all that I suppose you brought us out of. Father, I pray that you continue to come for those who lost their loved ones, to heal the sick and shudder. Father, I pray as we gather together and seeking to build a better city with all the visions, planning, proposals, studies, that was done on projects that for the coming year 2020, that these projects become reality. I pray this prayer in your holy name, amen.
Amen. I pray allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody. I want to thank you all for coming out this evening. First of all, I'd like to recognize two people before we get started. But before we start, any additional additions or additions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Under the City Attorney's Items, I'd like to make a motion for item number 12 and 13 until the December 18th, Commissioner.
Motion second for item 12 and 13 until December 18th, Commissioner. Any further discussion? Here in the all of the papers, where's your right hand? Right in the motion carriage, it was for item until December 18th. Any further addition or additions? Okay. All right. As I said, I'd like to recognize two people. Brunson Alumni Chapter, Devil's Singing, Dana Svarad, he is here this evening. And if you'd like to come and address the body you can. Will you please stand? Come through the chapter? Thank you. Would you like to address? Okay, thank you. Also, we seem to have some students, and I don't know exactly where or what school they're coming from. One of you guys come up and let us know who you are and why you're here. I see one of them. Brunson, you guys explain. Hello, Dana. Dana, welcome to here. Hey. Tell us who you are.
Hello, my name is Chairman Comer. I am from the School of CCGA. We are here for a class. We're doing an assignment for our government's class today.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming. Thank all of you for coming. And hopefully, you know, as you come into this arena, something we say or something we do can help make your class better. So understand why they come. So thank you for coming. Please come again. You don't have to have an assignment to come. Come in here and check us out. Thank you so very much. As we move along, I also want to recognize, I see our municipal judge, Judge Crystal Donalds, you too. All right. Our first item on our agenda is our public comment here. And we have one public comment here. Mr. Al Berheim would like to speak to us. So will you please come forward, Mr. Berheim, and give your name and your address, please, that you speak. You have five minutes.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Al Berheim from Bank 24 Union Street. And tonight I wanted to bring up a subject that's been on my mind for a few years, and I wasn't sure how to resolve it. I live blocks away from this area downtown, but it seems like every time I drive by Mary Ross Park or through downtown, I never know what's going on until I see the event in the park or somewhere in the city. And so I thought that maybe we had an events calendar for the city, but we don't. And I've been talking to Matthew though on it and found out that everybody just kind of does their own thing. There's no consolidated city calendar for events. And I think that would be extremely helpful for all of us in the city. Now, we do have the newspaper ads and the radio ads that announce different events and Facebook groups. But to have it all consolidated into one calendar would be fantastic. I'm about to hit send an email to y'all. And on there are 11 examples with links for other cities around Georgia that have events calendars. So you can kind of see what other cities are doing. And several of them have the same type of format where they show a calendar just by the list by day, or you can go to another view by week, and another view by the whole month, and you get the whole picture of the whole month. And then you can click on that event at the title of the link and you can find it. The challenge for the city really is, there's so many groups out there that are using city public space for meetings and events, is getting one person in the city's staff to be that point of contact, the keeper of the calendar. It's going to be the trick. And I don't know how the other cities do it. And you're going to see as you look through those links that are varying degrees of success. Some are much, even though they're using the same format, some are much better, much more informative than others. And that obviously alludes to the quality of the effort that's going into it. But certainly, all the groups with DDA can feed into that, to have one point of contact. GIA, it'd be nice to have GIA, that's because if you want DDA eventually, you can go on the city website or the DDA session. If you want to know what GIA's doing, you've got to go to GIA's website. URA, the Star Preservation Board, even NDA's can feed into that. So we all know what's going on. There's one central place that everybody knows they can go to look at events calendar for the city. So I just bring that up for your consideration and something that hopefully y'all will decide to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The comments, Commissioners?
I'll say I have a real good idea. I can give you a real good example, too. Last night I was going to run off a link, and there was a public important event going on down at the college. And I think that college had a way to put a check in the carriers for the city or the county, perhaps, that may be a conflict or an issue behind that. And it can't be all the time, I'm sure. That was important to me that happened here in St. Louis yesterday, in those stages. There are media land there, facilities out there. That just would be a good way to help.
It sounded like a good project, Commissioner, that basically that put on our parties for this year. When we get together, what plan, when we would decide as to who, what parties we sign up and how far, you know. Thank you. Our next person on our public comment period is Paige Weeks. You, here?
Is there a way I can wait this for now, please?
Excuse me?
Can I wait this for now?
For now?
Wait.
Until?
I'll speak.
Okay. Let's look while. Ms. Madam Clerk, anybody else?
Yes, Mayor. Dave Bowers.
Bowers. Come forward, take your name and address, and also you've got five minutes, sir.
Yes, sir. We have five minutes. Okay. Dave Bowers, 526 Union Castle Street. The item on the agenda that I was going to speak to tonight, because I've been reading some of the past minutes, so I'll make myself free to just say I'm happy to see that the team's together for the next two years. I wish you God's favor.
Thank you, sir. Oh, yeah, this way. Say, Commissioner, one is seek for reelection, and we will be together. This commission has been together for the entire, my whole term as mayor, and that's what we're going to do. So here, Commissioner, raise my hand, please. Madam Clerk, anybody else?
Pamela Bailey.
Ms. Bailey, please support. Take your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Pamela Bailey, and I reside at 2611 Royal Street. And I just want to bring to the floor other works, the work meeting that was earlier today. I have been coming to the City Commissioners meeting all year, and the conference center has been bounced around, tossed, and every which way. But I just want to say that for it to become a vision, it's many people's ideal envision to have a structure here in Brunswick, Georgia. To take nothing away from the library, the library does have its purpose, but to have a structure that will be beautiful, somewhere where we can go and have events, such as dance recitals, weddings, receptions, and just not meetings. It's just my personal thought that by it becoming, being called a conference center, that it gave a lot of people the thought that it will be meetings up in there. But I see it as a multi-purpose structure, where we could have a lot of different things there for the community. And it will, like I said, beautify, start a beautification of, let that be the structural part of how to go forward into building other structures of business around the downtown area. And I hope tonight that we can come up with a decision or whatever to pass it along. And I was just overwhelmed earlier when someone mentioned that we would have to defer it until the hotel, people came in and spoke about the hotel being a part of the conference center. But when the conference center first came up, the hotel wasn't mentioned, the conference center was an entity of its own. So that's just all that I wanted to say. And thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Our next Commissioner. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Bill Bernstein.
Mr. Bernstein, please come forward, take your name and your address. You have five minutes, sir.
Okay. My name is Richard Ritzman. I live at Bank 14, Richmond Street. PT Bargain said about businesses that without promotion and advertising, something terrible happens, nothing. The first one, they advertise for a business, retail business, is their sign. That's what I want to talk about. The city has assigned ordinance with tax. It is 13 pages. First two pages are definitions. They have a number of prohibitions. For example, window signs which exceed 30% of window area, not 5%, not 40%, 30%. I don't know. Signs which contain visible smoke, steam, toxic particles, or odors, we have. I didn't know that was a thing. It seems that it's a matter of group regulation that we have to have 13 pages to govern the signs that people put in their businesses. It makes it more risky for the business to do it, and as a result, they cut back on their signage. And some of the first, that's when customers go to look for the business, they look for the sign for it. And if a business doesn't have adequate signage, customers won't find it. The people passing by won't know what news they're selling. It tends to discourage customers from that business, that is, they retail sales, and this is a fact regarding the city. Of course, in addition to regulation, you also have taxation, and there's a tax on every one of those signs. You would think a sign that's taxed every sign in the city, but it's being cashed out, right? Well, I called the city finance director. For 2019, this tax bargained $3,242. The year before was a banner, $2,025. You probably spend more money in ministry than than you're getting a tax revenue. You're certainly discouraging businesses from opening and putting signs out, makes it more expensive. It seems a counterintuitive thing. I would suggest respectfully to the Commission that you appoint a Blue Ribbon Committee to review this, three people, to simplify these regulations, and also to eliminate the taxes of those who do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein. Our comments, Commissioners?
Okay. Yes, sir. I think if we go looking into it, and we can attract businesses to the city, we can do something with our services. So we ask our city attorney to be able, that he can give us an area that will be most reliable.
That particular order has been discussed on several occasions with the toy brand and playing and testing some pictures. Okay. As you say, we will. And I like the idea of Blue Ribbon Committee as well, sir. So thank you for mentioning that. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, I can point to this.
Thank you. All right. I want to tell everyone, when you address the City Commission, you get an opportunity to watch your opinion about what's happening in your community. Also, we also have NPAs which are really drumming down right into your community. Your community itself, so you can address issues that's happening in the community that you probably could not come here. So we are being very proactive and trying to put the information there, putting the opportunity for you to address your commission and get things done in your community right where you live. That's what we're all about. Okay. As we move right along, we close out our public comment period. Our first item on our agenda is presentations. Item number one, Brunson Glen Joint Water and Sewer Executive Director Andrew Burrows, update the Commission on activities, projects of Brunson Glen Joint Water and Sewer. Mr. Burrows, for your.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for giving the opportunity. I spoke to you about six months ago, so you'll see from our presentation, if you've heard the last one, we've got a lot done in the last six months, and there's going to be a lot going on in the next six months. So hopefully, we're making progress that's visible in there. So start with the projects that we've got going on in the city limits. We recently completed some smoke testing in the road area. Tested about 105 miles of pipe and found 700 defects. 700 sounds like a large number, but we're talking about 100 miles of pipe, so 700 miles over there. As a sort of a benchmark, we did the portion on the island, about 40 miles on the island, we found about 300 defects. So it's pretty close to what we found on the island. So that's a sort of indication of how our systems are laid out. And most of these are going to be simple fixes, clean out caps that need to be put back on and things like that. Manhole covers, they got a spew or something of that nature. So we'll be working through this list coming up. Under construction currently, we have the L Street project, which y'all are a little aware of, getting the road bang, we're going out there. And we recently awarded a contract to do some hearing place pipe rehab on Altama Avenue. I've got some pictures of what that looked like. We've got some processes along Altama and parallel to Altama that need attention. And this allows us to do work without having to dig up the streets. And then we've got a manhole rehab contract that's going on countywide, burdened process rehabbing 125 manholes throughout our system. And that's an annual thing, so we're making progress with that, and that can reduce the amount of water being in our system. So on L Street, we've got a couple links here, we're heading by, there's some folks that didn't have, had the fire effects previously. And on right there, that's a poly service, and that doesn't look like a whole lot, but a lot of the customers out there have existing galvanized services. And that is what happens to a galvanized pipe after years of use. Most galvanized pipes put in the 60s and the early 70s, and the galvanized pipe rusts, and it starts to shrink down in diameter as the rust builds up, and then eventually the pipe breaks. And you've got two problems. One, there's not as much water going through the pipe, and two, you've got leaks out there. So when we get these poly services connected, the homeowners out there are going to be a lot better water pressure and certainly won't have the problems with the line breaking anymore. We're in the process, we've got babies and more than all this done, those homeowners should be connected within the next two weeks. So here's some examples of the CIDP work I was talking about. This is coming off the Spots project on Woodlock Street. But on left, that's what the Canyon Creek pipe we had looked like prior to doing any work to it. Obviously not a very appealing picture on the rock. That is a branded pipe that's been created inside the old pipe without having to dig the street up to do that. So that's exactly what we're going to be doing along Altama Avenue. So we'll see our trucks, the trucks of the contractor out there, it looks like they put a big saw down in the line, but that's what they're doing, is creating a branded pipe in there. So that should be good for at least the next 50 years. All right. Under design and/or out for bid, Magnolia is a city Spots project, I was meeting with y'all then, that is out for bid right now. Pump Station 4021 is the pump station in front of Sonic on Altama. It will be out for bid prior to the end of the year. And Pump Station 2003 is on K Street. It will be bid hopefully before the end of the year, if not, right after the first of the year. And then we're doing some design work on some rehab at the Canyon Creek plant on 341. So briefly on Canyon Creek, we're focusing on four things out there. There's more things going on, this is sort of general topics. The number one thing is we're going to put odor control systems on that plant. I am not going to guarantee that it will never have an odor in it, but we're going to subtract and reduce it out there. So we'll put in some equipment to do that.
That's not just masking, that is really to help control it.
What we're going to do is we're going to enclose some of the open spaces up there, and then draft all of that foul air into a device that likes to clean the air before it's put back into the air. So there's that sort of thing to do. And that will help out drastically in that area. Influent screening, we currently have, it's called three-quarter extremes. We're going to put in one-quarter extremes, which will take out a whole lot more material before it gets in our plant. A three-quarter extreme will let 20 hours fall through, a quarter extreme will catch a potato chip bag. So that kind of technical, combined stuff that would be coming out, we're supporting it now. We're installing influent filters, which will actually clean water overflowers to the environment. We actually don't have to do that by permit, but we're just doing it anyway because it will help the water quality out there, so it doesn't be going in. And then we're going to do a lot of internal piping moving around. So a lot of work going on out there, that should be another construction next summer.
What's the cost of the odor control?
Odor control unit is probably going to be one or two and a half million. That is a lot of money, but it will certainly make a difference. So let's move on now to some customer service stuff we've got going on. Starting July 1, I talked to y'all, in June, we started offering 5" meters back in our system. Previously, we were on a lot of 1" meter connections from new residences in our area. Started offering 5" inch connections, which allows you to put a new connection on our system for less, for more than $4,000 or less than what it most costs to get on our system. So we've got some bad publicity over the years for about how much it costs a ton of our system. This is a cost-effective option for people. If you've got a single-story house, there's no way, you can't get away with a 5" inch meter. If you've got a three-story house, then they've not. But a single-story house, you're good to go. So those are the ready-to-go batteries, so for about six months, and so certainly if you're interested, we will set up. Now, we got deferred tonight, but we're doing some leak adjustment revisions. The main thing we're doing there is going to simplify it, and also going to allow people with existing balances to get leak adjustments. This year alone, we have denied over 100 leak adjustment requests because someone had an existing balance. Whether that balance is $20 or $2,000, they're not allowed by the State of the District right now. So as soon as that gets passed, we're going to go back to what you're at in the year and see if any of those pieces will qualify now. So hopefully, we're going to help a lot of those folks out. And then we're going to simplify the calculation. Currently, it's very complicated to get your leak adjustment figured out. Now, it's just going to be, if you get a bad water bill, come to us, we'll take capital, whatever the over your normal bill is. So if your normal bill is $50, and you get a $500 bill, the difference there is $450, you'll get $225 back.
But that's not automatic, you got to go through different qualification for that?
You have two actions fixed a leak, and turn it on and go ahead and show that you've got to fix that, so. It'd be very simple to do it, and we're trying to streamline that process.
Is it a legal issue?
As long as you can prove by your water use that is decreased, so your leak is gone, and provide either pictures or receipts showing that you have fixed the leak, it doesn't have to be by a comma, we can get it fixed.
Just want to make sure that the old leak is automatic?
It is not automatic, you've got to fill out one sheet of paper. And we started our customer assistance program back in June, and I'm pleased to say our first group of applicants has made its way through Coastal Georgia Community Action Authorities Program. It's a 10-week program, all for a wraparound case management structure that do financial literacy and a lot of other things with them. And to get the stipend that they're getting from us, they have to fit in the program. We had got our first group through that, so they will be getting their customer assistance very soon. And we're going to have another group going through at the start of the year. So we're seeing some impacts from that as well. And if you're going through a 10-week course to make sure you get your water bill money back, you really need the money. So that's, we're helping the people that truly need it. And then a couple of other customer service options we've got. We now got paperless billing. You have to come, you can sign up, call in, we can get you signed up for that. A lot of people are doing bill billing right now because they want to make sure that they're going to get a bill builder email, but it is working, we've been testing it for three months now. And then you can now do recurring payments, do automatic bank draft. Previously, you had to go on every month if you paid your water bill online and paid every month. If you want to do that by auto draft now, we'll just take that out of your account when you go through.
And no cost?
Add no cost. So, and that is the end of my presentation. If you'd like to see all that support?
On the automatic draft situation, if your bill fluctuates over down, how do you do that?
If your bill fluctuates, it's going to take the amount of bill out of your account. So if you have a leak and you do not stop the payment prior to it coming out, if you get a major water bill of $1,000, it's going to take $1,000 out of your account. But when you get your leak adjustment, we'll put it back in there. So if you get your water bill, my suggestion would be to look at it before it's due to make sure that you're not going to have a lot of money come out of your account because of the leak. So it will take out whatever the monthly bill is.
I have a question on the, one of the projects that you sort of spoke about running on, I think it's over on Altama. I guess my question is, are there any council communities over in that area such that, since it's been fixed on from our suicide, the galvanized piping, does it now need to be addressed? But individual communities may want to do this.
The individual homeowners may need to address their side. If it is a galvanized service from our existing water main, likely it is galvanized past the water meter as well. So if they have a galvanized service here, unless by us, it looks to be the part for 20 meter and a half. And some people have had, unfortunately, because galvanized services leak so much, they had to replace their, the one on their side of the meter. So some of that may have already been done, but yes, there may be something you can do about.
How about deposits? And where we are with the deposits? Do you give them back or do you?
We are in the process of returning deposits. We're starting with the ones that we've had the longest. And unfortunately, some of the folks that have had deposits still need to be settled in the county since the 60s or 70s. Their deposit was $5, so they're not really benefiting any credit in their bills. But we are starting to return those deposits, and one of the orders for this, we're requesting, is that commercial deposits can be refunded after five years as well. Because we've got some large commercial customers that have been paying their water bill for 40 years and still have a deposit.
What's the process to get your deposit back?
If you have paid for three consecutive years as appropriate, you can get your deposit back. And we're going through, we've got 30,000 accounts, so it's going to take a lot of effort to do all manually. But we're just going through the oldest accounts to see if they've got some good payment.
And then you get to check out or you?
It gets supplied as a credit on your next payment. So if you have a minimum water bill of $2,850 and you had $100 deposit, you may not have to pay a water bill for three or four months.
Check case and add?
He talked about his son, I know. And both of us, Commissioners? Well, thank you for, also, you know, we probably want to update every three, four months. I thank you for coming and sharing what's going on in our community. Thank you so very much, sir.
There are all these questions, go ahead.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving right along, Commissioners, our next item is public here in land use. Item number two, abandonment petition number 1901 for Michael Carr's, petition for abandonment of the unused five feet right-of-way that joins this property at 45 J Street, and it accommodates seven parcels into a single parcel. Mr. John Hunter is presenting for us. Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. I just had Michael Carr's petition to abandon a five-foot right-of-way that joins this property at 45 J Street. This is also part of combining a number of seven parcels into one acre of parcel to facilitate future development. Existing five-foot right-of-way, the question is not here for you, I see the other doors are traversed by other utilities. We'd survey all utilities that might be involved, and none of them have any utilities there, we're going to have an objection to abandonment at that location. The, these five-foot right-of-ways, as John noted, abandoned a number of these in the past. They're remnants from, somehow called honeyeys. They were provided back access for disposing of waste. And typically, they're, they were not used. Occasionally, they may have a water line or a sewer line or something like that. If you flip into a packet to draw, I apologize, I think we highlighted area did not show up when it actually got printed. It's in blue on my piece throughout here. So it is a very narrow strip that enters the block from J Street. If you, and then if you go to the back of that same page, you'll see what the finished lot looks like. And all of these are our own, by a single owner, so unlike some abandonments, we're going to be splitting it between multiple owners, which will simplify the process. This date of the, for the planning commission at their November thirteenth meeting, and they recommended moving forward with the, with the abandonment and the eventual resubdivision of these lots to combine. And so we bring that to you today. I don't see this before us here this evening, so let me just represent.
Mike Johnson, representing for us.
So if we have any other specific questions, you're free to ask. You've got questions, you can do this later.
Any other questions for Mr. Hunter? One question was, are we still going to maintain access to that case we have from us up to there?
Public works saw no need for maintaining any access. It is also not far from an alley, and that's where all the services come through in that area. So there's really no need to maintain any type of easement through within that five-foot area.
So that, that easement became part of the city, right, because of J Street?
No, the, this, this was an actual alley? Yeah, because a five-foot wide, I guess, two block deep alley into, into that block. They're not uncommon in Newtown. We've abandoned a number, I think, three of these in the town of Adam here. And there, there aren't that many of them left, but we do run into them. And it was purely a function of manual waste disposal before they had sewer systems in the city. I'll, I'll leave that to, I'll be hard on this question.
Yeah, and it's just, because of the way the parcels sort of lined up, and you've got the same alley just to the east of it too.
Yeah, just to the east of it, that's one of our fifteen-foot wide aisles. Yes, okay, yeah, I see where you're talking about, probably the next half, yeah, you can see where those are.
But, I'll tell you, those are not all owned by the same person.
No, they're not. And in many cases, these alleys have already been obscured, and you run into them when you're trying to do future redevelopment.
Are there any by the way of excesses?
No, ma'am, this is, this is all being contained within Mr. Torres's apartment.
Okay. Yeah, one question for, ask for, the individual gentleman to speak. About looking at your post here, it says staff representation, I see nothing about providing the parcel. So do I have a moment?
Not recognized, but it's all part of the state.
Staff, are you in favor of providing that too? All right, any further questions for Mr. Hunter? All right, sir, your name and your, we are.
My name, my name is Mike Johnson, I represent Torres Properties, and here for any questions you might have concerning this position.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Johnson. For the, I know it may be too early to, to ask for combining this property, what was, what's the use for combining this property?
Our plan is, at present, we're in research and development status, putting a small grocery store, convenience type, upper-end to service our arena. We've got a real issue with four hundred, so it's almost a hundred percent occupied, and people from all over the world, many grocers. So we're looking basically to come on as customers, provide that possession, but also serve the city as a sponsor as well.
Commissioners, have any questions for Mr. Johnson?
It worked, it has, absolutely, man, won't give us no money.
Good question. As soon as possible, but still, we're exploring what type of, you know, either franchise or particular ourselves. And as neither else, and Mr. Torres, we're watching very closely, as long as we're going to grow, and we're wanting to follow that trend as closely as possible. So those that are coming up behind Mr. Torres' scene are extremely concerned with the state and how it represents itself. So we're able to offer four hundred foot to certain franchises, which sounds to guarantee success. So we're kind of bargaining the best ones to come into town, as soon as possible is the best answer out here.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Torres, for doing that.
Big wishes, everyone, Merry Christmas, guys.
Is that possible?
Just an interest for our ability, other things though?
Right, we'll, we'll go through the typical value process, if there's any need for any involvement, commission, whether it's commission use or their rezoning, and those items that all come back. There's only effects, just bringing up the five-foot left. And, and, so you know, the combination for the resubdivision of all these lots is actually going to happen. So they've already approved that as well, in this decision.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay, commissioners and audience, this is a public hearing. So we're going to say, anyone who'd like to come forward and speak for or against the granting of this petition. If you come forward, please state your name, your address, and you have three minutes. Um, Mr. Hunter, who's looking at something, our agenda said nineteen oh one, and our book said nineteen oh four, what are we looking at?
Oh, okay, so the subdivision petition is nineteen oh four, and the petition is nineteen oh one.
So you would need to, to?
You would just need to go first. Nineteen oh three, I have a petition nineteen oh one.
All right, I'll ask again, is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against the granting of petitions? Please step forward, state your name, and you have three minutes. Commissioners, it seems like no more questions to come forward, so are there any further discussion? And if not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, offer motion that we approve of abandoned petition nineteen oh one.
Second.
Reproving motion second for abandonment, for the, approval of abandonment petition number nineteen oh one. Are there any further discussion? Here it is, all in favor, please raise your right hand. I have motion carries, thank you. Now, how do we deal with nineteen oh four?
That's our plan, information.
Oh, that's, all right, cool. All right. So we're here again, item number three, condition use petition number nineteen twelve, Confederate.
Passed there?
Placed there.
Placed there, I apologize. Petition for a conditional use permit to allow hoarding of animals at nineteen sixty-five, then having a swing number five hundred. Mr. Hunter again is presenting.
I am not getting up.
Excuse me?
Uh, so, uh, the request is a conditional use to allow the hoarding of animals. This location is part of one point three-six acre size, commercial development on Glen Avenue. It's commonly referred to as a REITs building, a lot of people have known that from the beginning. It is known highly commercial, and hoarding of animals is under section twenty-three dash nine dash three, or zoning ordinance. Animal hospital ward, animal hoarding facility, provided by all arrangements of the tank building, and no means connected with, connected with the operation facility, you're setting up your own premises. Is allowed as a conditional use. So when this application for building permit came forward, we informed them that they needed a conditional use, and they provided the information needed. Within the packet, you can see, turn to the town floor plan within your packet, it was part of your application. All the tenant is done indoors, and you can also see that they've provided a soundproof partition wall between the adjoining retail space. It's a red line on the left-hand side of the floor plan. So it meets all of our requirements that would be required or issued to permit. This went before the planning commission at their November thirteenth, excuse me, yeah, November thirteenth meeting. None spoke for the floor or against the application. The public planning and appeals commission did discuss noise and outdoor drainage. One of the things you'll notice is that there is an exercise yard shown behind the building, if it is outside. Any drainage there can be addressed by fresh cream, so that any wash-off doesn't go into the stormwater system. That can be addressed through the building permit process. And so both staff recommended granting a conditional use, planning and appeals commission also approved, or recommended approval of conditional use nineteen twelve. In agreement with the staff, but placed an additional condition of sunset of ten years based on this location being in the design framework. So if you have any other questions about this application, about answering this time, or representative from the?
Questions for Mr. Hunter?
From the business.
I've got a question, so we've all along the end line. Kind of remembering, I think it's the problem, is that it's an outside wall?
Um, yes, that is an outside, that would be outside. So obviously, it's thicker than the exterior walls, right?
It has, is there information that we know how soundproof that wall is to be adjoining business along the other wall?
I, I don't know that I can answer that.
Have you been, have you been in touch with the neighbors, I mean, we tell you?
It is called, I don't know, I don't know, the owner may have some information, the builder may have some information, how these specifics are, soundproofing.
So please state your name, you are?
David Durden. What we see here is, we have the Caldwell Bay, from the side, and the American Hospital, we all see it all is indoors. They're in the same contract, according to the South, the building owner, they're very specific, because they're very happy with what they have on that site, that's a very hospital.
So they have the same soundproof wall?
Yes.
From the gold, not the animal hospital?
Yes, Caldwell Bay, and then they have the other wall joining them, so that that hospital.
Yes, yeah, they're in between.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
And what about elevator, drainage?
That's all they're taking care of through the building permit application, that was actually some of the feedback given by joint water sewer. So they provided additional information, satisfied with that.
Is that going to get filtered out?
Right, it's all filtered out, they guys, specifically made their joint water sewer request, they do.
And are y'all saying, are those without?
Yes, sir.
What kind of wall is going to be around the outside line, outside two?
Um.
So, come on up.
Question is, the, the type of wall or pinching, what's going to be around the capital line, outside two?
The side of that thing, it's going to be, we're keeping it the same as the DM wall, so that's the same thing.
About sixty, Paul?
Yes.
Any further questions?
Thank you for coming, and being a part of bringing up industry, so I'll say that.
So this, this is a new business?
Yes, sir.
Never done it?
No, sir.
How many ways will we have?
At this point, we're looking at five to six, and going to ten to twelve.
No further questions, thank you, sir. Again, this is a public hearing, and I will entertain anyone, commissioners, entertain anyone who'd like to come forward, speak for or against the granting of this petition. Please state your name and your address, and you have three minutes. Again, it seems like no more rushing to podium to speak. Commissioners, we heard from our, from Mr. Hunter, and we also heard from the owner and, and individual speaking for this, this type of business. If you guys have further questions, I will entertain them also.
Mr. Mayor, offer motion that we approve additional petition nineteen as twelve, with the recommendations of the appeals commission, ten years sunset.
Motion second for approval of additional use petition number nineteen twelve, are there any further discussion? With also a recommendation from planning zone. My other question is, are you guys okay with the planning zone, commission, um, stipulation of ten years?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries, man, thank you, thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Hunter, you are here again.
Yes, sir.
Item number four, condition petition number nineteen thirteen, from Paul Bigpen, petitioning for a conditional use for twenty-two, twenty-six, Glen Avenue for open yard stores of vehicles.
Thank you, sir, the back petition for conditional use to allow yard storage vehicles. Thank you, sir, the back petition for conditional use to allow open yard storage vehicles, tend to use, uh, as a car lot. The existing parcel is one point four eight acres in size. Uh, and it's previously been an auto dealership, uh, in the cop family that leadership there for a number of years. Uh, was then used as a church. And that is why they're actually having to come back because of that change of use from, uh, from an auto dealership to a church. That changed the classification, now they're back to make an auto dealership. The existing zoning is highly commercial and has a lot of most of the surrounding or meeting with adjacent parcels. There's no close change to existing, uh, structure of the parcel. And as I mentioned, the need for conditional use truly triggered by the change of use at property and applications for business wise. Section twenty-three nine three F, zoning ordinance allows open yard use for the sale rental and or storage of materials and equipment. Excluding junk or other salvage, provided that such uses are separated from adjoining residential properties. Single painting screen, that's a wall at least sixteen in height above finished grade. Uh, conditional use process allows the city commission to place a condition on parcel to make certain that those uses are compatible with surrounding uses. Staff recommended that the following condition be placed on the property, that the property used exclusively to sell or rental of unworn trucks, SUVs or passenger class vehicles. This was before the planning and appeals commission, after November fifteen meeting. No one spoke from the public or against the application. And the discussion that happened in the appeals committee, uh, committee meeting included discussing landscaping, uh, cleaning of the rear fence and cleaning up the parcel, a little bit egress onto, uh, US seventeen and some of the DOT regulations. And also some familiarization with the, the avenue design framework. PAC recommended approval of conditional use application. I'm certain you agree with the staff with the additional conditions of the sunset application, uh, sunset in ten years. And that as they move forward, will be considered as a design framework.
So it's really, it's really two conditions. You're, you're mentioning, uh, the lot being exclusively for the sale rental, the parking vehicle, the garage, the lot. Then also the, uh, sunset after ten.
Yes.
It's really nice.
The other here, the applicant, Paul Bigpen, he has a question.
First of all, any further questions for Mr. Hunter? I'm Paul Bigpen, how are you? Thanks for identifying yourself, sir.
Thank you.
Um, if you do have a question, please move your hand.
Oh, yeah, no problem. It's probably been a hair.
No, I think you probably, you have to leave, uh, all hair gone. Alright, no problem. Uh, any questions for Mr. Bigpen?
Mr. Bigpen, are you going to do any, uh, little changes?
Probably not, honestly, we're going to, we're going to hire it out, we're going to hire it out. We're going to get other shots. You got the, the stuff for it. I really don't want to bring that here, what I did mainly was to clean retail, you know, get clean.
No changes, no repairs.
Well, there's some, you know, they're looking at mine, should be very, 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 they want, they want to be. When I say mine, I mean like, my school's not working, you know, my, very, very.
Not can't.
No, no.
Yeah, you're not going to have.
We're not changing anything.
I thought there was a grocery store or some kind of?
It's next door.
Space next door.
Any other questions for Mr. Bigpen? Uh, one question is, um, what's your, your ingress and ingress on that property? Are you accessing from the rear well, sir?
There, there are two access points, there's, there, uh, there are two actually, on the seventeen. And then there's shared access out the rear of the property to.
I do my own, we're not the reason that. Probably up to the people that told them they were on the property.
Okay, so they can shut down, I guess, essentially what it does.
You've got at least two, two perp that's on that.
Yes, sir. This thing, this, this perp is set up. It's easy, easy.
And your building probably goes all the way to our ward three.
What type of fencing or cover, um?
There's a fence along the side of the property. I think there's some overwork on it.
Yeah.
On the south side, yes.
And we, we know ourselves, you know, my new cars, because they're in my cars, or high-end overcars and something. Yeah, it's not a good job. I don't know if all of this ownership is sold, can afford ownership, let's kind of sell, they themselves, I suppose.
Any further questions? Mr. Bigpen? Thank you for bringing this business to our, our, our community, uh, our city. Appreciate that.
Another two, and by there, that's where I'm really, I'm doing the camera, I'm going about a hundred fifty feet. And I'm moving out there full time, be flying back and forth about the same. But, uh, I, I'll put the plan to, uh, push this way. I hope that I'll get the same hundred fifty, two hundred fifty here, so this, this is the start.
Any further?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, commissioners, then, this is a public hearing, uh, so we will entertain, uh, most, we will entertain anyone who would like to speak for or against the granting of this petition. If you will, please come forward, state your name and your address, and you have three minutes. Again, it seems to be no one rushing to come forward. Commissioners, if there are no further questions or comments that you have, I entertain them all, please.
Mayor, I have a motion that we approve additional use petition nineteen dash thirteen with the staff recommendations and, uh, appeals condition recommendation, ten years sunset.
Second.
The motion is second, uh, for approval of petition, living conditional use petition number nineteen thirteen with the recommendation, uh, stated by Mayor Porton. Are there any further questions? Here it is now, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries now, thank you. Okay, we are here again, item number five, conditional use petition number nineteen fourteen. Zachary Harris. He's the agent petition for a conditional use for eight twenty-nine, eight thirty-three, nine oh one and nine one one, Bay Street. Where we all source of equipment and material. Mr. Hunter, who is our, who is our senior planner, presenting again.
That's one for you. We can visit. So, um, this parcel is commonly purchased as a low-craft, uh, parcel, uh, basically, uh, consists of four lots. It, it's roughly three point eight six acres and, um, it was purchased earlier this year for, uh, this cease and desist properties. Uh, this would be used as a, uh, as a tunnel and storage area for marine construction company. They originally approached us and applied for a re- zoning. Uh, and going through the re- zoning application, they determined that this property, uh, could not support the re- zoning because it does not meet the minimum lot sizes. They're requesting to re- zone the basic industrial and, uh, that requires five acres. And this was a three point six acres, so it did not qualify for that. But as we researched into what the uses were going to be, all the uses, uh, fell within our general commercial, which is the current zoning. The only item that did not would be storage, storage of their equipment on the site. So as they're doing construction, taking barges out, and doing their marine construction, they would have their equipment there on the site and also materials. So that requires a general commercial, uh, requires a conditional use program. This, uh, the proposed development, uh, would have sources staging to re-invent, repair and maintenance of the onsite boat ramp that allowed them to launch equipment boats. They have some incidental maintenance of their construction equipment as they're coming on and off the site. Uh, they would load equipment there, uh, and materials onto vessels and barges. Uh, they also deploy artificial reef and materials for the handling of marine habitat. And they've also been doing some new training on marine equipment building and other trains. Uh, they're an alternative to access the rail server that is on that area. And they do not start any debris, junk or salvage, or any recycling operations at that site. They also be doing some necessary repairs to waterfront, including bank stabilization. Under section twenty-three nine three of the zoning ordinance, um, this allows, uh, open yard use for the sale rental and or storage of materials, but that excluding junk or other salvage, provided that such uses are separated from adjoining residential properties. By a single painted screen fence or wall at least six feet in height above the finished grade. The staff recommended in favor of granting a conditional use. Uh, when this went to planning appeals commission, uh, November thirteenth, uh, meeting, uh, there was no one there to speak for the public. Uh, there was a discussion of the future land use for the area, uh, in particular the waterfront properties in this and the size and type of equipment that would be on site. That there were no structures being posed, that the initial use option was less intensive than changing the zone. Uh, that's one of the things we had in this process also, we looked at, uh, the comprehensive plan. Uh, the waterfront in the historic district is to be encouraged to be the general commercial or future residential. Staff that they want to a basic industrial use would not be following the comprehensive plan. So, uh, the same way, great solutions will allow them to, to do the activities since they need the general commercial and, uh, could support, could support the conditional use, uh, application. So the planning appeals commission, uh, recommended moving forward to allow the conditional use of open yard storage of equipment with the following conditions, that may, uh, potentially love to be required on the inside of the parcel. That would be on the H three side and would be directly across from residential. So that means a little requirement that it's screened, those activities, uh, that no junk or salvage be permitted on site and that a sunset of ten years on conditional use, uh, be applied based on the location of the waterfront. Questions?
They're, they're going to do that, uh, off of the inside of the fence.
Uh, it would, it would be on their property.
And they're going to use the rail side there?
Uh, eventually they would like to potentially if their business activities continue to, to further move forward.
Is that, is that the potential all from build out with rail spur?
Yes.
What, what does that mean?
So that means that they would need to, a, a, as they expand it, they would need to actually build a spur that connects to that line and comes on to, to access it with a different property.
And then, does that have an effect on truck traffic or?
Um, actually, it would have a spur, a rail spur, right on the side, but probably reduce their truck traffic. And they're delivered to the side. Both of which, both a rain terminal and a spur on them actually also allow the general commercial.
Um, is, are they going to, uh, keep the chain link fence in place or?
I, I, with the type of materials that they're going to be working through, obviously they would have some sort of fencing.
Right. Is that out here?
Uh, I know Mr. Harris is here, I don't know if he's.
But if it be within bounds of historic district, if they, they, if it's the fence now, they have to put back up something that's.
That is, yes, they would need to come forward with a, with a certificate of programness, uh, if they may change to their fence. The, the existing fencing, uh, that's there, they prepared as is and planted it. They could actually also use, uh, we do have within our, our historic guidelines that you can use chain link fence if it is completely screened, if you take it, you still have to use it. So, um, if they have a good, if they have a better, they could use that.
My name is Ryan Erbus, uh, we, we would have a very intent of keeping the fence, putting a screen on and providing vegetation. So we don't plan to.
Well, y'all done a great job cleaning up the property already. It looks a whole lot better than it used to.
Thank you.
Though we had some issues, um, related to, uh, just our activity that were there too.
We noticed that. So if we give us enough of what you plan on doing with the areas, what we can give, um, overall potential?
Yeah, uh, certainly, so just as a little bit of information, uh, I'm the vice president for the company. We want to be a good neighbor. Uh, we have a short-term goal and a long-term goal, but we do not plan to leave from this way. And so we're here for the long haul. When we come up to, uh, an opportunity like this, I'll give you an example of what we're going to expand. And we would like to do the same back in here. We probably have between twenty-five and thirty, uh, current employees with our company that are based out of Roswell. And they cannot wait for the opportunity to knock off Savannah, man, it's their home. So, uh, the short-term goal for us is, we want to complement what the city is already doing with this area. And at the same time, we want to make sure that we're flexible and we grow with the city. Uh, so initially, you know, we would be looking to have ten to twelve, uh, local staff. Uh, we currently own the foreign car center. Uh, some of you may be familiar with that, Sandy, she's a great, great person, you'd probably take your car there to her. Uh, we purchased that facility, we fell in love with Sandy, we're going to keep her own, she's actually going to continue to run that facility. But we're going to use a few of those offices, uh, for some of our staff that will continue to grow. So initially, uh, when we say that we're bringing equipment here, we're talking about high-end equipment, it's not trash, it's not salvage material. These are multi-million dollar cranes and barges, so it's a very high-end, uh.
That would be used on the water or?
Some would be on the water. What we do at a company, we're a marine contractor, uh, we're currently doing a lot of work for the Georgia Forest Authority and the Army of War. And there's a lot of projects coming up locally and we're, we're preparing ourselves for that locally and roughly. We see ourselves as being a, a good neighbor for you guys. When we come, we, we like to support the local mom and pop shops. You know, I'll give you another example of, of the situation that we had in Savannah. Uh, there's a local hardware store, uh, and when we moved in that location, we immediately started buying all our tools, equipment, hardware, materials, and we tripled their year in growth just by moving, moving to Savannah. So when we come, it's not just, it's not just the property. You're looking at restaurants, you're looking at hotels, you're looking at rental properties. And so the, the impact that our presence could have here locally is not just short-term, but it's long-term.
Could you explain a barge trespass?
So basically what that is, it's a, I would not even call it a structure. It's what you do, you drive, uh, timber piles in the water and it's a, and it's an access point in order to actually walk into the barge itself. So there will be a catwalk that goes from the land to the barge. Uh, the barges will obviously be in the water and they probably do is. The barges will obviously be in the water, and they probably do is we spud down the barges. You're looking at probably a hundred foot by forty foot on the barge as far as the maximum size. And so most of that equipment actually stays in the water. And then you have support equipment all the way down.
So you've looked at this in a better part, there's no dock, but do you need to reinforce the seawall?
That's correct. What we'd like to do, there's been a lot of erosion in that area, and we just want to stabilize the building and help stabilize that. Basically, that means putting the river trap in the front. That's a, that's a short term fix, but it also kind of prepares it for the future as well.
The old dock?
The old dock is gone. Now, there's a boat ramp that's.
That's the fallout ramp, is that where?
That's right, that's right. And we would likely to stabilize that as well. You know, there are pieces of concrete that are cracked. And so it's just a matter of fixing what needs to be repaired.
So what are you going to bring in by the way?
That is, that is a long term no goal. That, that would be some materials, so brick wrap. No gills. No, it would be, it would be bulk materials. So we do a lot of work with the D R. A lot of times they have offshore, whether it be brick wrap or other reefs that they want to install. So typically, we bring in material either bar or real. But that's a, that's a long term, that would be a long term goal.
Where, where would you fuel?
Typically, what you do is you have a, you have a small five hundred gallon tank that remains on site. A place like Memorial Hall, they come and they would refill probably once a month. Maybe not even that much. And you literally fuel all the site.
With the underground?
And, you know, we follow all the proper school prevention. They have containment around that area as well. So it's just a, it's basically a bucket that, that barrels it in.
So that, that property is not very deep. You'll be able to take something off of a rail pole and put it out to the barge?
Yes, sir. So, and again, the rail spur is long term. We understand and appreciate the, the future master plan for the city. And honestly, our bread and butter as a marine contractor is building wars and river fronts. And so we can assist you in that if you have it ready.
So primarily, what you're, what you're positioning yourselves is for this future goal, for the city in the moment that you know is coming?
We.
Or is here?
It's here, and it's going to continue to come back to L A. But we want, we want to take advantage of the local workforce that is currently having to drive to Savannah. We want to stop that.
Any further questions?
Now, the only other question I have is, how many employees will you initially have? And then, what do you project to grow?
So, company wide, as of March twenty eighteen, we had thirteen companies in Savannah. A year and a half later, we now have over two hundred. And so we've grown very quickly. Obviously, we'd love to see that same grow in Brunswick. Some of that will, then a lot of projects come up. I think initially, you can expect eight to ten employees globally. And we'd like to see that grow. But part of that is we want, we want to look for skilled laborers, but we also want to provide opportunities to train those skilled workers.
So are you working with capable contractors or skilled laborers?
We want to. And I'll give you an example of what we did in Savannah. And then I'm glad that some of the students were here to grow. We're a part of, it's called the Savannah Engineering Academy in Savannah. And we take students that are interested, this is our company. We work with other contractors and engineers worldwide. We take high school students that are interested in STEMs, so science, technology, engineering. And we take them through our projects, we let them have internships. And then we basically give them the shadow of the program where they can help train our projects and a lot of others. I would love to do something like that here. So we would love to partner with some of the local groups to see how we can, we can work together.
So is there, have you all initiated any conversations?
Not yet locally, but we would like to. Part of that, this is step one. We, we need to make sure that we can have a presence here and have something that we would like to do.
And so you said about, about eight to ten employees that you're going to be looking for, how to front this area?
Well, the, actually, the people are already here. They live here, but currently are having to drive out to Savannah.
I'm just trying to get some more.
But we want to have a point to give you to hire locally.
Thank you, sir. Just maybe, if I may?
Yes, please.
Zachary Harris, agent for the application. Just want to speak to Mr. Commissioner Casey, concerned about the rail. The rail component is not a part of this application. It's a, it's provided in the application materials for information purposes. So there's no plan, if you approve the C U P, you're not approving a rail spur. Want to clear? Just come back for that.
Any further questions, commissioners? Thank you, sir. And thank you for bringing your business to Brunswick. We really appreciate that. And you know, right, Brunswick is growing, and to be part of that growth is really something. Thank you for, for being here for that. All right. Mr. Hunter, another question for you, please, sir. What does mean when you say to continue to take the sunset, what would that actually mean?
So the, the idea behind the sunset is that as things change in the future, this property is not locked in to this particular use. If they're still here, they would come back and say, we're still here. Or here's what our activities are. And we would, we would ask them to reply and extend that traditional use.
Right, go ahead, hold on.
Yes.
The only other question I have is, just the, if they're getting a barge and some equipment into the water, assuming that that's not going to create any issues, would that afford to come in?
No, it should not, you know, and that's something that, obviously, working in that business, they're very aware of where the channel needs to be cleared and what the regulations are, how far they can keep equipment from the shoreline. So, you know, we'll have you rely on them to follow the rules.
Another question. Are they looking to combine these parcels or they can use them as this relax?
Because they're not doing construction on those, at this time, there's not a need to combine those parcels. If they were coming back in to do construction buildings, right, that means something that we need to look at. At this time, they don't have that need.
What would order them to the north?
To, do you want to ask a little question? To the, to the south, I believe, I just think it is Merritts. Yeah, so to the south, this group is marine extension. Into the north is actually partly the city of Brunswick. You know, Keller Works here, yes, sir.
City of Markham.
Yes, and the city, yeah, City of Markham.
Any further questions, Mr. Hunter? Okay. Again, this is a public hearing. So this commission will entertain anyone who would like to step forward to speak for or against granted this petition. Please step forward, state your name and your address, we have three minutes.
Good evening again, Albert High and Twenty-Four Union. I'm not opposed to the business or what they have to offer. I'm absolutely opposed to the location. We're talking about prime real estate, waterfront real estate in the historic district, right downtown Brunswick. We have to decide what Brunswick wants to be. Do we want to be industry or do we want tourism? And if you do something like this now and tie up that land for ten years, you have now eliminated your opportunity to do something else with that prime real estate. Because it, let's face it, it's prime real estate and it's very close to downtown. If we can eventually get some of the citizens to be out of here and do something more towards tourism, certainly would help, the waterfront would help the city and attract, attract visitors. So not opposed to business, but absolutely opposed to them doing this type of use of this property. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else come forward to speak for or against the granted petition? Please step forward, state your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Commissioner, my name is Baze Aiken. And I'm here to speak in favor of the motion. I'm just, I'm familiar with the, the applicant on a professional way. And I'm, I have, I understand their, their corporate identity and what their purposes and their intentions for us. I'm, I'm excited about what they're going to do. As to the, the parcel itself, they're going to revitalize that parcel. They're actually going to go in and improve it. And they're not going to add any major structures to it. And so, over time, if there's an opportunity for that parcel to have a higher and better use, I can't think of a better corporate entity that could control it and use it.
Thank you, Mr. Aiken. Is there anyone else like to come forward to speak for or against the granted petition? Again, please step forward, state your name and your address, we have three minutes. It seems like no one else is stepping forward. We appreciate the individuals who came forward to speak concerning this petition. So, Commissioner, is there no further questions or comments that you have? I entertain most.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When you say this property was recently purchased, so?
By the applicant, yes.
By the applicant, yes.
It is March.
Any further questions?
Now, I'll go ahead and ask, the, the total investment in the property was?
I don't know.
Do you think you did it? Question, sir?
Yes, sir. We initially presented for right of choice. We are starting to have a lot of.
All of the parcels?
That's correct.
Any further questions? All right. Another question, Commissioner, what's your going to say?
I'd like to know if you agree with petition number nineteen fourteen.
Second, approved the parcel.
Second.
Recommended condition to hold.
Second. Then probably most of the second for approval of the petition, the petition on nineteen fourteen, it stated recommendations on the pack. And standard recommendation. Are there any further discussion? One question to Mr. Harris? I know we have, gave you the, the, the Phantom Zone Appeals Commission has, has recommended some petitions. You guys, you have these petitions that have been up. We don't have any objections. Again, probably most of the second for approval of this petition. And the further questions? Madam Clerk, will you please follow up?
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Hudson Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Higgin?
Yes. So that motion carries naturally. Thank you so very much, Mr. Hunter. Thank you so much, everyone who came forward, this commission, especially the ones that thank for our city of Savannah. Okay. As we move right along, item number six, considered approval of November twenty, two thousand nineteen, court session and regular scheduled meeting minutes. Take a second to peruse, and if there are more complaints.
Sixty-seven. I don't say that, it's not the sixth.
Item seventeen, is the regular schedule.
No, 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 no. Cancelation.
Oh, that's the cancellation.
Oh, okay. For here, maybe.
I'm still with John.
Here's to, to the clear, again, this is just a motion on item six.
Yes.
Okay, then, yeah, did we get a second?
Second.
Been probably most of the second for approval of item number six, which is our November twenty court session, meeting, meeting minutes and our regular scheduled meeting minutes. Any further discussion? All right, please raise your right hand. Both Eric and Anthony. Item number seven, considered approval to cancel or reschedule to January first, twenty twenty, regular scheduled commission meeting.
I'd like to know if you approve on that show.
Second.
Wait, we need a date. Hey, if you want to cancel it, reschedule.
What's happening on Thursday? Thursday the second? Yeah, well, what's happening a week after that?
If you work to the, if you find, you can wait to the eighteen.
We need to work people in there.
Till the fifteen. You can wait till the fifteen.
Now, we got people needing to warn them. We need to get them to warn them.
So we've got a change in conditions. We, we about to open the potential, we scheduled a period of time that the potential, we may go to this one earlier since we've got a change, not with business.
So the next meeting is fifty? I'll, I'll make the note and reschedule to January meeting to, for January fifteenth.
The probably most of the second for, to reschedule our meeting to January fifteenth.
No, we just cancel the meeting. And then the next meeting will be January.
Okay. So it's probably most of the second for cancellation of our first meeting at January. And we will meet, our second meeting at January fifteenth. So. Did everybody get that? All in favor of the, I didn't put the discussion, excuse me. Have our meeting, oh, we have only one meeting in January, that'd be on fifteen. No further questions, comments? All in favor, please raise your right hand? All right. So that'll be. All right, item number eight. Consider approval of contract between City of Brunswick and the African Construction LLC for pre-construction services and construction of the Old Dog Conference Center. Who's presented this or what are we doing with this? I know we had a work session. And Mayor Paul Tim was the one who chaired that meeting for me. And, uh, Mayor Potem, uh, was the one who chaired that meeting for me, as I was asking for most of it. So, if you want me to give a synopsis, I have to say, we're here to, we had a, uh, meeting, la- our last meeting came to, uh, standstill, two, four, uh, twenty dollars square foot conference center and two against, uh, and one, one span, and then I vote. Uh, so, um, we said we bring us back to this meeting here for possible avoiding, so, um, and we had a work session in between that to discuss, uh, had some discussion and presentation from Elkins, also from our architect as well. Uh, during that meeting, I think some, some, uh, changes were made, some, uh, compromises, so to speak. And that was previous to your.
Haven't been brought to you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Casey.
Well, I, I'd like to, uh, thanks to City Attorney, he would come forward. Some guidance, some guidance on, I was going forward with this. But, um, it's very big of, um, options, and I will do my best. And I feel I'll take some, some discretion, and sort of aside from what I felt like the, the session meant to. Based on the discussion in the session today, appeared that there was relatively, relative consensus at the board to look into, um, engaging Elkins in the first phase of pre-construction, uh, services. With the understanding that whilst engaging, uh, the architect, Pat Shea, um, to sort of come together and make some concessions on the budget, um, and, and moving forward. So it, it appeared that they, they suggested the first phase of pre-construction was roughly six thousand dollars. Uh, and Elkins asked that they need the age now to be able to, uh, work to build the passion, to scale the project out into a budget that would fit with the city's anticipated spending. So my understanding of it would be that we, that the city commission, if, if they elect to use it, would be Elkins in pre-construction services, subject to some revisions by myself and Scott Parker, who's president of Elkins on that contract. And on the condition that a change order be executed with Pat Shea at the December eighteenth meeting. So that both Pat Shea and Elkins Construction are actively engaged in putting together a proposal for the city that meets the budget in a more, between conference and deferment. That fair analysis will hold on today. Uh, I would definitely, yes, sir. So, um, any questions for the City Attorney?
So at this point, we, we don't necessarily have to have a, have a specific budget number in mind.
I think Pat, uh, as the architect and Elkins are both in the same mission, separating team, same unit. They'll work together and put this in place and, uh, plan it all together, that would be interesting for within some sort of budgetary strength. That's my understanding. Not necessarily alone, it's more so alone budget.
But we really need to let them know this tonight.
Yes, yes, um, at least the first phase of pre-construction service. Which, which would all be as to the six, six figure.
Essential estimate, working together with the architect, getting an idea of, of course, then separating, giving them some, some idea of budget that they can put something together and bring it back where there's an idea and understanding that this commission will look at it and say, here, man.
When do the advisors committee?
Well, um, two days.
Or Tuesday, okay. Can we, uh, have the advisors committee, uh, move their special power meeting so they can take it up? Or would you have to try and have, what, what is?
Um, they are there.
Oh, I should have.
Okay. What is the current December date for the advisors committee? Because I think if.
It is, uh, for Tuesday, you say.
On Christmas Day.
What do we have now?
Either a week or the day before.
Yes.
So the seventeenth would be the day before, but the city commission may even, you might want to do it a week before that, and if, if it's not.
So that's a day to next week.
Correct. He just got like the phone off. This move, um, she can have that.
That's how she, she, she can do that, so next Thursday's.
Okay, my count, I'm sure I get that.
It's a really good question, they can do it in a way you can have everything lighting that was discussed every day, if you don't have it, they can really tie it, tie it down.
And there's still. But as Elkins discussed, there are several parachute points that are failing this process. So if at this first stage, after the estimate is given, there is a new direction that's necessary, this commission can take that. If not, then you can go forward again, be completed second, second and third phase of pre-construction. Even then, after that, those two things are done, there's a second parachute for there, and you still can come to a decision, you may want to final guarantee maximum price, which the legal, uh, to go back.
Well, I'm glad we've gotten this far, I don't seem to have, uh, getting, uh, to the hurdle, getting ready to go with this hurdle. Are there any further discussion?
So do we need, do we do anything at this point? Do we vote to bring that to the spray team meeting after the finance committee has met?
I think we. The Elkins contractor?
Yeah.
I think what he said again, about doing something too, when he asked you on the issue together. My committee is looking at the budget type of part of it.
We, we, we are at a point that we can move on with both on Elkins, and what you said, I understood.
I think if you made a motion to improve, you can ask conditions on it. One of them being that the Elkins contract subject to City Attorney revisions, and all the rules of, and, 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 for example, pre-construction in different phases, it doesn't make much of a difference. The second condition would be that the understanding that Elkins would move forward on the approval of the change order with Pat Shea. And then the third condition is that pre-construction services do not start until the change order has been finalized, so that they, because the pre-construction phase, as defined on the contract, is a time period, I don't think, unless obviously, as it goes, otherwise, I think that they're anticipating starting with Pat Shea moving forward from there.
Can you say a multiple, I'm pretty sure that they won't really, uh, have that, unless you have.
I, I can kick a step.
Okay, go ahead.
Hold on just a minute before we do this, we want to be sure of the cost. We don't want to leave that. Can you state what the cost is, just moving forward, make a motion.
I, yeah, we'll. Six thousand.
Six thousand. I'm sorry for the conference center.
We're moving this forward.
Oh, no. I believe Scott gave, Scott Parker of Elkins gave a rough estimate of six thousand dollars for this initial phase. Uh, the change order for Pat Shea, I think he has, he gave the time to come back.
Where are you going with that?
Right, I mean, I think he said.
The reconstruction services by Hawkins do not start until later.
Until the change of order?
Until the change of order has been.
Pretty good. Say. Okay, the motion was second. The motion was by Commissioner Martin, second by Mayor Potell Williams, for to move forward with stipulation that's been stated in that motion. I would not try to re-gird the table or restate it. Are there any further questions or comments? Madam, you call the other one, please.
Commissioner Tyson?
I have your question.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Penney Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes. That motion carries unanimously and it has taken a while to get there. We are thanking commissioners for your.
Yes, that was a great step forward. So, thank you all and we will keep moving forward. Okay, item number nine, consider approval of excess group health insurance and new life insurance carrier. Mr. Ted Meyer, Assistant City Manager, presenting. Mr. Lloyd.
Good evening. Here tonight to present the agenda item for excess group health insurance and our new life insurance carrier. Mr. Michael Lloyd, the White House, is here to presentation for the city of Russell.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, the city's all very nice. You have new package information including your new benefit programs that are coming up for renewal January 1st. The first is your actual employee health plan. And that you currently get into a covenant for a number of years, they possess your claims. And that's what we're recommending that we continue with. Nationwide is your stop loss period and sitting up is your network. And that will remain the same. In the past, you've had an $8,000 specific development and where employees in that state are staying. And your contract is a 2412, in other words, it looks back 24 months from base to 12. Last year, you did not have a laser. This year, you have one conditional laser that's higher spec level than everyone else has. So, everyone else has $8,000 on this particular person, an individual, potentially $350,000. We've had as many as three or four at one time. So, we've had a pretty good run and not having any over the past several years. Your health plan is made up of two components. That's your fixed cost, that's your admin, that's everything to do with running your health plan. And that stays the same, so there's no increase there. And then the other component is made up of your reinsurance cost. That's for your specific development, which I mentioned is $8,000. And then an aggregate, which covers any large amount that sets a threshold. You did have a slight increase for your excess insurance, which is 4.3%. I can tell you, I've seen this this year, I've seen double-digit increases. And 4.3% is pretty good. That's not the very best I've seen, but it's right there with the very favorable renewal. And we work down and again, that's staying with Nationwide. We market this every year, so we go to the market place and make sure we get the all-press deal. And so, we're confident in saying that this is the very best we can give for you all. So, the overall increase is 4.3%. Any increases on your medical? Are there any questions on your medical?
I see somebody went up a little bit here and said that it's been a single premium and a family, seemingly a family premium.
Yes, sir. And that component is the cost of your reinsurance, not the component, but actually is the fixed cost. So, your fixed costs stay the same. So, again, the two components, your fixed costs, which is the admin and your claims cost. And your claims cost is what we need to continue to focus on managing. Fixed costs is relatively small.
If we have a big claim, a claim that's a big patent claim, this should everybody sort of, we're working to manage those.
Are there any other questions on your medical? The other is your life insurance, basic life insurance. The city provides basic life insurance on every employee. So, for your management, they receive $20,000 worth of life insurance that's provided through by the city. And then all other eligible employees receive $15,000. We had an increase this year. And so, it went from 0.230 to 0.290. And so, we marketed that with the number of carriers and we were able to get to mutual overhaul. We will operate with a lock-in to your current rate, so we'll make your rate.
So, we changed from women to mutual?
Yes, sir. That's our recommendation.
Need to help it. That's not bad compared to what our fellow employees increases in. I look at this and I say, okay, that's not too bad.
Yes, sir. A little room for improvement.
Well, we appreciate you shopping for more.
Certainly, we appreciate you all's business and time.
Okay, any further questions for you, Mr. Lloyd? All right, sir. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the excess group health insurance coverage and new life insurance carrier as presented.
Second. Motion second for approval of excess group health insurance and new life insurance carrier as presented. There is further discussion. Here in the all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carriers and managers, thank you. We are at item number 10, alcohol beverage license renewals. Number 10, consider approval of 22 alcohol beverage license renewals also.
Nothing needs to be edited from this list, so the list that you folks have is actually the list that we're going by. So, would you like to do the same thing that we did last year?
We split the renewals, no violations?
Yes, because number 22 actually has the public hearing tonight.
So, for number 20, is what you're saying?
Yes, for the absolutely zero violations, number 20 could be the.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Number 19, David Baranowski. Seems to me that should be for a request for consumption on premises, not retail sale.
That is correct. I apologize, that was a typo. That is for consumption on premise.
Is it included Sunday sales?
No, maybe. Sunday sales is only applicable to restaurant staff for 50% prepared for the annual personnel.
We have 20 beverage licenses, alcohol beverage license renewals for us at this time. And has been presented by Officer Elliott. If we have no questions or comments, then I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to motion to approve the first 20 licenses.
Second. Quick question.
Motion was second. Any question?
Yes. Pie Guys Pizza, number three and four, they're not open on Sunday?
No. And he actually, Pie Guys Pizza at the London Times location was specifically listed for named Pie Guys. And he recently just changed that to Art Taste for advertisement or marketing advantage. Wasn't getting the attention he gets here downtown. So, but they are not open on Sundays. No, you were looking? No, maybe. Thank you.
And further questions, comments?
I'll comment that I hope that we can get business increased enough out here if I guys will want to build.
Here in the all in favor of granting these 20 alcohol beverage license renewals, please raise your right hand. Motion carriers and managers, the light we have announced.
So, the typo on the on the bandit lounge will be.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we have two, we take these one at a time, two renewal violations. Number 21 is Christian Meyer LLC, also known as Fountain Package. I know we're going out and I've been going out with her.
Okay, so for number 21, Christian Meyer LLC, doing businesses Fountain Package. It was discovered this year that they had falsified all of their applications with the city to include their application initially with the probate court back in 2015. And that also includes this year's application as well submitted for the.
Can you elaborate?
Um, yes. So, initially, Mr. Hunter Soya, as you see on the alcohol renewal sheet, has recently been added as manager. He hasn't been with this company or the business since it opened in 2015. Mr. Mookesh Patel was or is the owner of this business. In 2015, he rented property from Mr. Nick Shaw, which was right behind the store. He also went to the probate court and gave them the documents for the citizenship act that needed under Georgia state law. You cannot own a liquor store without being a resident for at least a year prior to owning that. And I believe that's the same in our ordinance, no it's not. However, the citizenship, the law of Georgia is that he would have had to have been a resident for at least a year before he would get approved by the state. So, he falsified documents with probate court that showed that to them for signing off that he had been a resident locally for at least a year. Since then, every single application he has filed with the city has shown the same address. The address that he uses, 2310 Park Street, North Street, which is again right behind 2300, which is Fountain Package. Last year in 2018, the landlord, Nick Shaw, took him to probate court in order to get his 50 for hidden ownership. Essentially meaning, there was a sublease going on. Mookesh was the owner of the store by name. So, we would think that he is the person running the store and having all the knowledge of the store. But instead, he had somebody else behind the scenes coming in that we had no idea was running the store, didn't give background checks, so on and so forth. So, in the court documents from the probate court, Mr. Mookesh Patel admits he has never lived in the state of Georgia outside of one day. Now, this is back in 2018, beginning 2018 for this court. When he filed his application with us at the end of last year, he then again used the same address he just said in court he did not live at. He changed his address this year to a previous store employee's address, which is in the county. And I have both the previous store employee's address that he's using, saying that he doesn't live there, he only stays there overnight or for the one or two nights that he comes in to deal with his stores. And then again, in the court documents, Mr. Mookesh also states the same as far as the new address that he's listed. He does not live there, he only stays there when he comes to town to deal with his businesses. However, I have no information on his New York addresses. He had never provided a New York license outside of the very initial application that he had. I sent a letter requesting earlier this summer, proof of his residency since 2015 to show proof or disprove he either is a resident or not a resident. He was unable to do that. His attorney locally was also involved. She was also unable to provide those documents. She gave a email that addressed, she didn't have them at the time when they were working getting them. It was four months ago, still don't have them. And then now it's pretty much, even now that she doesn't live here, he lives in New York and he's not hiding it and he's still giving applications of incorrect addresses and falsified documents. I'm requesting a public hearing for the 18th. Because at that point, I will then present all this information I have, again, to you folks on the next meeting so you can look over all of them. And I also have it now.
So, you're asking us to defer orders?
I'm asking for the public hearing because, I mean, it's up to you. If you want to renew the application with that information. I'm not recommending a renewal, I'm recommending that December 31st, his store has revoked his license, they can't renew.
It would seem like you are asking us to defer it to a public hearing, which would be at our next meeting.
Correct, because they would be, we are obligated to give them that.
Right, have you notified them or you wait until they decide to find out first?
Waiting on the decision first.
For the ordinance, if there's a decision that may reverse their license, might as commission their order to the right and have a hearing.
Exactly.
The recommendation of what would be an adverse action against the license, so the right investigation. They're given the option that they're here to take. And I think it would require within 30 days to the ultimate potential, they would be.
19.
I would then have notice to their attorney and to the licensees that that would be here.
So, lay that for us in plain terminology and how we move. Explain to us in layman's terms, what we need to do, what's our next action?
If the commission can consider an adverse action, ordered with all renewal, consider that an adverse action and they would be afforded the right to have a hearing on the 18th. So, I would set it out, give them notice at their hearings.
While we haven't said by adverse action, we have a public hearing to determine whether it's adverse action or not. Also, they are afforded to bring counsel.
Present adverse.
Got another one. If they decide they can't make that, and they push it out past the 31st, our next meeting will be January 15th. Do we continue with conditional permit until then or what? But we have no.
My gut reaction would be that they would be allowed to continue to operate so much like a people.
Exactly.
And they would not have their license unless you took action to suspend their license tonight or deny your renewal. If it was a deferral, then they would allow people to operate until. I would need some time to get a formal payment, but unless there's an active tape down among people, then if we still operate.
Well, we're looking for a public hearing first of all, that's what we must do.
That's right.
And no limit must be given to them and their attorney or whatever, by this.
I can say with certainty that they're allowed to operate until that public hearing is done. If this commission takes action, has a hearing, does a process.
So, they are allegedly in violation of not only space but local law, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so commissioners, if we deal with item number 21 of also known Fountain Package, it's been recommended by our Deputy Marshal that we have a public hearing concerning this. And so, I intend motion on that.
So, may I like to motion that we defer to the 18th. We need to give notice to the Fountain Package store to be ready for a public hearing on the 18th.
Motion second for item number two, Fountain Package to appear for this body as our very first for a public hearing. A notice to give to them and you guys would deal with it, you would begin. Any further questions? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carriers and managers, thank you. Item number 22, we would deal with it as item number 11 on our agenda. Item number 11. All right, item number 11, considering this is an action for alcohol sales violation Golden Island Liquor. Deputy Marshal, I'll need to see you again for then. And also, Golden Island Liquor is represented by counsel. This is a public hearing?
No, it's not a public hearing.
Sit here. All right, go ahead, Officer.
I'm just gonna recap on the violations for Golden Island Liquor. They had three underage sales, the first one being in 2016, the second one in 2018. The second underage sale in 2018 did not, was not cited. There was insufficient video evidence. They did get the product, it was submitted into evidence, but because of the evidence quality of video, it was not taken to court, however, it was brought to the commission with consideration. That second underage violation in 2018 brought them to the new year of 2019 for six months probation, beginning the 1st of January 2019 and ending the 1st of July 2019. During the time of their probation, they had their third underage sale on the 1st of June.
Okay, thank you, Vic. Although not to reveal anything, I would love a quick question.
First of all, may I ask Officer Ryan, we have a couple of questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Who was the licensee in 2016?
I actually don't have that folder with me, but I'm sure Mr. Harry can relay to that question. Whose name was it?
It was the owner who was operating the business at that time.
Actually, it was Mr. Harry that operated at that time because his story about his wife being the one that got the underage sale. So, he was actually managing that store at that time?
He has said that he was not the licensee at the time and he was not personally the user of his sale. So, we would suggest that that was not appropriate, rather than taking this issue. And with regard to the 2019 charge, that has been dismissed by the court.
That was dismissed by our city attorney with the proof alcohol beverage sales. It doesn't negate the fact that they still took place.
The kid that you voted a language that was said to somebody who was born in 2004, which would pay them 14 years later, we have subpoenaed any records to show the agent back a person and you were unable to prove any of that. So, the charges is yes.
I'm not a judge, so I'm just a attorney of our, excuse me, back and forth. Do they need to be presented to us and stuff?
This is the appropriate form for the hearing. The facts that we know about Deputy Marshal are accurate. Most recent, as you know, we calibrated our alcohol completely in early 2018, excuse me, late 2018. The most recent violation occurring on June 1st, 2019 falls within that herd of new assets. That case was brought to me to court. Mr. Adams, on behalf of the owners, did submit certification showing that they are training for sugar sale now responsible alcohol certification. Based on that certification, we did dismiss with a fine for assessment of court costs, $75. So, you know, looking through the history, I'm not sure of the change in ownership of 2016, that initial violation, the 2018 violation occurred prior to the ordinance. But based on June 1st, 2019, that should be considered a violation of the ordinance, but it was not found to be a criminal who dismissed it because of proof of training. So, it still followed in this commission, per view, that the ordinance is setting forth the first, second, and third violations.
So, according to our city ordinance, if I'm correct, this would be their first violation.
Under the new.
Under the new ordinance.
Yes.
Which would assess them a fine of $150 and six months probation. If that's the will of this commission.
That is correct. That would be the first offense.
Why not, I'm asking you, the person who was in relation to purchase alcohol in 2018?
While I'm not dealing with those two things, Mr. Adams, I think those were not even what we were looking at. We're looking at the violation of 2019.
And I'm asking for the 2019.
How was during the trial, you could have asked that, or did not have one?
No, we subpoenaed the records of a person, the kid that you were with.
You got that?
They were pushing.
Mr. Ryan Corrigan, about that for me, the license that I sent on your.
I think if you look at it, Corrigan just stated that it was only one violation and that was on June 19th. And that violation basically, in a sense, was adjudicated in municipal court.
And in charge of this thing?
Based on certification that training that it performed at municipal court.
Not because it did not have.
Right, it just said, I don't think it dismissed, I just, it was quite out of legal territory.
It was not planned out, it was dismissed.
In lieu of submitting certification showing.
Or dismissed meaning it didn't exist, doesn't exist?
No, that's not what it means.
Okay.
But what we have seen in matters and they never produced any way to show the agent post, most of the persons who have been chosen. of this person, who was the person who was having the purchase.
Again, we got reached on a trial that we did not have.
Ms. Adams, you're right, uh, there's no, no, no.
It's just that she's being allowed to come in and put on this drug swing, when there was never been valid case paper, her ticket said that this person was born in two thousand four, they would have been fourteen years later, and she had no evidence to support this charge, and that's why it was dismissed.
I had video evidence, and I also supplied the ID of underage who was seventeen, who made the purchase.
Well, why did the ticket say fourteen?
Well, let's not get into this argument we've had before, I said before.
Also, just to clarify, um, locally, when there's an underage sale, it is brought to your attention. The license is not affected per se by the state unless there's a guilty disposition. So the underage sale did take place, however, the only thing at this point would be a local, um, violation, the state stays out of it, so according to who the licensee was, if we're going to, can, if we're gonna move forward, and I only bring up stuff when I should certain licensees and need to verify who's the licensee, this, the licensees in the city change every year, maybe two years, that is the average for the spreadsheet that I created this year when I went through all the files. So, um, Golden Island, to my knowledge, was not one of them that had any different names for multiple years at this point. I could be wrong, I did not bring that file with me. However, it still remains that it was under the same management from two thousand sixteen until today.
Okay, but I, I don't think that's what the perfect fact is, we, we move past that. We're dealing with the current violation from six twenty nineteen. He's making a point of the age being fourteen. You, he said, based upon information about it, it should have been seventeen. Does it not make it still a violation whether they're fourteen or they're seventeen? Is it still a violation?
Correct, and it was a technicality on the citation which again was dismissed at court, but it still happened, and the ID was presented for Mr. Ryan Corey, requested it from me to give to him. So he had the correct date of birth, and he had the information of underage, first seventeen.
What's he, the seventeen, does not make it not be a violation, there's still an underage.
And it's just.
Sir, stop, stop, talk to the mic for me. Talk to the, into the mic for me, please.
It's actually, it is a fundamental, a narrow process to say that some unnamed person made a purchase which she says, she's not concerned that she witnessed, and that you would then penalize the license owner, who may have had no opportunity to cross-examine any question of this. You're assuming that this happened, but there is no proof of it.
That's your question, Ms. Adams. Do, do, uh, everybody, they get charged with underage, uh, sometimes, do they bring that person in, that child, whatever, in to, to face that, that jury, or face the judge?
If you were to make out the catch.
I'm not sure, do they do that?
So the.
I have, I have, I have never seen a young person come in and say, yeah, he sold to me.
Well, maybe people just don't raise the point, but here, we deny that it happened, and if they ever have proved that it did happen.
Have the state ever proved that, I'm trying to say the same thing, have the state ever proved that they bought in the child to, to say, they, yes, they sold to me?
Yes.
You have case law there?
In all cases. When the underage sale takes place, when I do the operations, two things take place, you either pass it or you fail. Either way, I'm making contact with the store immediately, which I was commanded by from this particular store, because I let them know, hey, congratulations, and thank you for passing the compliance check, or hey, this is what just took place. They remind their purpose right in front of me, I also show them on the video that I have, and they're like, okay, it is what it is. They will provide the proof, they saw the proof when they came to the office, I even drew up the proof from the two thousand eighteen, which I know is irrelevant at this point. There was nothing hidden from the, the licensing.
So, so, in lieu of, means that you're still saying, I'm going to accept this in lieu of being penalized for this? So you're, we're in essence, contending that the action did take place, but in lieu of this simple guilty, I'm going to accept that I'll go through the training, so I won't have to be penalized. In lieu of does not dismiss a violation from having taken place or having happened, and you went through municipal court and conceded to that.
That's incorrect analysis of what happened. The charge was dismissed on motion of the city.
Right, proof of, but it's similar to a pre-trial diversion situation where somebody comes in and shows that they've taken out a set, if I'm correct, or wrong, that was committed, we would dismiss it to court costs, it's kind of a standard obvious.
So.
I got stopped for having a taillight on, and I came to court and I said, here's receipt, the taillight is big, the case can be dismissed. It doesn't say I didn't have a taillight on.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's what I said.
So, so, can I ask you a final question? Did, did the officer say to you that we were ticking you, you're getting a ticket for underage sales of alcohol?
Well.
Did you get a ticket?
He sold it, he sold it to me.
Who was sold, who got the ticket? You got the ticket? Wait a minute, how was they all doing it?
On duty.
Oh, he's on duty by himself. So you're on duty, the officer comes in and says to you that we have a situation where you made sales of underage individuals?
Especially if this gentleman hires a new character.
Mr. Harry was also presenting, he also.
So, so you were there, with him as well?
When he got, and my C case, and C was telling me about it, said, uh, he sold it to me, it's, uh, I was on that, and I got out, so it's what he, he showed the video still.
So it's called a video?
But there's not proof of an age of the person who was.
Well, if it was, if it was a stream operation and the officer sent an underage individual into the store to purchase, and they did so, then guess what?
This video just showed his face on, not for the customer.
I, I understand that, but if the video shows that there was a sale for underage individual, rather, rather, rather than thirteen, twelve, it don't matter. The sale was made, the officer came back in immediately and said that the sale was made, nobody arguing the point then. Why are we arguing the point now?
Commissioner, there is no proof of the age of this person.
So, let me, so, I'm sorry, so let me ask you this, if, if there's no proof, Mr. Adams, turn me over, if there's no proof that this happened, why did you go through the process of going through the training, if there's no proof? I wouldn't have went through the training, if I'm standing and saying I didn't do it, why am I conceding to go through training in lieu of getting penalized?
No, Commissioner, I think that the city is encouraging all license holders to go through protocols so that they are avoiding making mistakes in selling to underage persons, and so the fact that they did that is not enough.
Please watch your mouth, Mike. Please watch your mouth, Mike.
The fact that they went through the protocol should not be construed as judicial.
Well, if, if, if I, if I can't, if an officer stopped me in line and said, Mr. Williams, I stopped you for speeding, or you ran that stop sign, and I felt like I didn't, and guess what, I have a right not to accept that ticket. I might be held in contempt, I might even go to jail, but I have a right not to accept it. Am I correct?
You can give the age aside and you can give the station, or not be heard, it's just give your ticket that's not protected.
I understand that. He had that saying right.
Well.
And he can't, can't, he can't exercise his right through the judicial process, because initially when we started all this, what we were trying to make sure was that he had his judicial process, and he all exercised judicial process, and that is what came out of the exercising of that judicial process.
Let me add something, Ms. Adams. Um, at the particular time, uh, when you went to court, and something was dismissed, how come you didn't ask for proof of the, of the child at that particular time, underage person? How come you didn't ask for that, at that particular time, when a court was, was happening in municipal court?
Commissioner, we had subpoenaed the letters, we were never able to get them, and I had a good bit of conversation with, um, with Corey, and he, I believe, was having some difficulty getting the underlying information from our strategy, but we never did get information as to who the supposed underage purchaser was.
Was there a question made in court?
Yeah, he made a request, I, and we submitted documentation, and that's when I received the certification, we came to the agreement, so we determined it was based upon acceptance of the certification training. At, at the end of the day, if I could, I mean, I think that this, in essence, would be treated as a first offense.
Yes.
Obviously, the commission will make a determination anyway, but.
We've already determined a first offense. We have four, five, eight, we'll determine that, all right, all right. So, all right, Ms. Adams, you are, that, you what, hold things and do this miss?
Yes, sir. Because we didn't have the lead, it has never been shown that the alleged offense actually occurred in order for it to be met, perhaps to be proven, that there was a sale to someone who was underage, the fact is not enough.
So you're saying that the, that the, that the testimony of the officer shouldn't be thrown out?
She, she, that's not true, she is still yet, not hoping to still first time.
Well, watch this, watch this, if they're doing a sting operation, why would they provide the name of the individual who were working that operation? That's, that's, I mean, that's like, you have an undercover police officer, and you say, okay, this is the police officer, and he come into, you don't do that, you don't give identity.
I'm just going to slide it for you.
Well, sometimes you have to, in order to prove something, and in this case, if you never prove the age of this person, it, it, it had this, uh, saying that the person was born in two thousand four, and now she said it was born three years earlier, so she's capable of making that.
Yes, sir.
So it's still violation?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's here.
I would, I would, certainly, that's up to the side, please, thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's, uh.
I believe what we're having here is a trial, and the, the burden, the burden proof in a trial, an actual, uh, city official here is to, um, Officer Elliott did testify to that, since we're having a trial, but I'm willing to testify to that also, I do know the person who she used, and that person is under age of twenty-one, whether they're fourteen, seventeen, we both can testify that they were underage of twenty-one, that's the only proof we need, we don't have to have video, we don't have to have anything else to present to this committee, other than we actually did do that sale, the underage sale, was we, so to squash it, it was, it was made, it was done, and we're willing to testify to that, we don't have to, uh, or go forth with criminal charges, in this situation, she did, but just a reason where we ought to do that in the future, we probably won't, we'll just bring it straight to the, uh, commission.
Thank you, sir. Okay, first of all, I mean, I asked Mr. Adams, that's all you have to say, sir?
It is.
All right, thank you for your, for your argument, thank you for, for your concern, for your client, and so forth like that, so, uh, now, commissioners, we've heard, uh, uh, presentation from Officer Elliott, we also heard presentation from Mr. Adams, who deserves any, uh, his clients as well, so, uh, as we heard from our city attorney, uh, about us being a first offense, uh, so we can deal with, deal with that situation, uh, Mr. Adams can take the, I guess, the rest of this up with, with Mr. Corey, if he'd be all right. Uh, so, if you're willing, pleasure, you have, no, are there any other questions or comments that you'd like to make before we ask for, uh, move forward? Okay, all right, so I, I ask for a motion to move forward, uh, with disposition of this.
Mr. Aaron, I'd offer a motion that we, uh, use the first offense, uh, situation that we have under our city ordinance, we can find a hundred and fifty dollars and a six month probation, based upon Golden Island.
I said.
We've got motion, we've got said, uh, for, uh, disposition of this hearing, uh, for first printed, uh, uh, for this sale. Underage sale, Golden Island liquor, that's right.
And also, just meant to, to mention, uh, motion, also, uh, go ahead and approve the renewal of the license for twenty twenty.
I would ask that.
Say it.
All right, we have two motions, uh, in the first motion, as I stated, for being a first printed, and, uh, stipulation, uh, that our ordinance says our states for six months probation, and a fine. Any further discussion on that?
I just wanted to clarify, because like L Street, we started that immediately, and we did the same thing to Golden Island as far as the probation.
It's right for the, yes, please. Any further discussion? All in favor of that first motion, please raise your right hand. Uh, and motion carried, and, all right, second motion was to, um, effectively to, uh, issue the license, uh, renewal to Golden Island liquor. Any further discussion on that? Hearing, uh, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All in favor of that motion carried, and that's it, too. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Adams, thank you, Officer Elliott, and thank you. All right, um, we have come to the end of our ready printed agenda, I know there's a need for a second session, hopefully it'll be short, quick, uh, sir? First of all, rules, the second motion, motion to go a second session, first of all, we'll stay. Most of the second one, for the, to the floor for second session, first of all, rules, they all pay for the, right hand, all right, we see I go to, uh, second session, uh, afterwards we will come back. During, I mean.